Call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to this regular meeting of the Boca Raton Community Redevelopment Agency. It's Monday, October 7th, 2024, and the time is 1:30 PM. This meeting is now called to order. Briefly, before we start today, I would like to take a moment of silence to recognize the first anniversary of the tragic events of October 7th. The images of the terrorist acts by Hamas against the people of Israel on that day remain vivid in our collective consciousness. The memories of the innocents whose lives were so violently taken that day and those subsequently caught in the continuing crossfire that ensued must never be forgotten. And may those still held hostage be made free again as soon as possible. In the words of Holocaust survivor Alfred Manzer, "We have to remind people that we are really members of one human family and mourn the loss of all innocent lives in this war." But everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons, would you please call the roll?
Chair Naklis.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Thankful to be here.
Commissioner Drucker.
Here.
Commissioner Singer.
Here.
Commissioner Victor.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments this afternoon, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And are there any corrections to the minutes of the regular meeting of September 23rd, 2024? If not, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Drucker.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, none opposed? Minutes are adopted. We have no presentations today, and we have no quasi judicial and related public hearings. So we'll move on to public requests. I'll open the floor to public requests. Ask anyone who would like to speak to come on up, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak on matters regarding the CRA. Would anyone like to speak? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll close public requests. We have no resolutions or regular public hearings and no other business to consider, so we'll move on to the Director's Report. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chair. Ruby Riley, Downtown Manager, will give us an update on projects in the downtown that are designed to refurbish the downtown area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, Chair, and members of the Board. For the record, I am Ruby Riley, Downtown Manager, and I'm here today to provide you an update on downtown projects as of September 26th to continue our placemaking, safety, and pedestrianism efforts in the downtown. In Meisner Park, staff is continuing to work with Brookfield on the maintenance items in the POA. We are trying to come to a decision in regards to whether or not the maintenance agreement needs to be amended. If so, we're trying to work to get it on the agenda at the upcoming meeting, so we will keep you posted on that. The vandalized, oversized Adirondack chair has been repaired and replaced, and we're continuing to keep an eye on that, so that the -- we've used a new signage this time in hopes that it won't be so easily removable. Also, in Meisner Park, we have permit -- is that correct? No, I went too far. Okay, there we go. We have the permit submitted for the lighted Instagrammable photo op artwork, which I'm sure some of you are very curious as to what that is. We are planning to have installation in November, and with that, we also would like to plan a reveal ceremony so that we can be -- all be surprised at the same time. We know you guys are going to be very happy with it, and so will the public, so stay tuned. We will be revealing that very soon. We also repainted tables and chairs in the black color scheme in Meisner. They have been damaged with some stickers and other things, so we have ordered another set of black tables and chairs, and those will be coming in the next month, and then we will use these tables and chairs as a backup in case, you know, other chairs get damaged or whatever, we can use them. Also, we are researching the water fountain filling stations. We have obtained quotes, and we are working on installation in the next coming months. The item I wanted you to be aware of is that there is no potable water in the POA, so we are going to get a filling station in the north end, which will be closely accessible to the water connection near the amphitheater, so the other items that we want -- we wanted to put four of them in there. Those won't get installed as soon as the first one will because we'll have to do some jack and boring and some other work to get the connectivity. The center area has non-potable water, so we will be making that connection. So it will take us a little more time than we anticipated with this installation. Then in Sanborn Square, you may have noticed the two poles there that have been installed at the northwest area of the park along Federal Highway. Those are for our event banner sponsors that want to put their event banners. They will now have a place to hang them instead of tying them to our beautiful trees, and we should not have an issue with that in the future. We also have received positive feedback from citizens regarding the new landscaping in front of the safety barriers. We are also coordinating with a potential vendor to activate the park for a green market on Sundays, and due to the weather, obviously, it didn't start in October, but sometime in this month, we hope to see that kick in all the way through February. Then throughout the downtown, the recycling bins are on order, and they will be placed in Meisner Park, Sanborn Square, and throughout the downtown. We also continue to work on the paver repairs throughout downtown, and the remaining zones are four, five, six, and seven, so that is continual work with our vendor, which sometimes gets slowed down due to the weather, but we are continuing to work on those paver repairs. And finally, throughout downtown, we are researching the digital kiosk options. We have obtained a couple of agreements from other sister cities throughout the state of Florida, and we are looking for a possible piggyback option and a turnkey operation. We will need IT support for content management, possibly traffic signals in order to provide a power source to those digital kiosks, and of course, we're working with purchasing for the approval of piggyback and legal for review and approval. And I just wanted to mention, obviously, in light of the weather, we are making storm preparation for all those wonderful things we've been putting out there and making sure we're taking them and putting them where they need to be so they won't be a problem. And Madam Chair, if you would just indulge me for a moment, as I am the face of downtown, I get to be the one to give you these wonderful reports, and I want to thank you all for allowing us to give these updates to you, but I also want to thank the dedication and hard work of my staff and also those departments that we work with. So if you will give me another minute, I will -- I will give you some more acknowledgement for the people that also make sure that these projects go into place. We have a very small but mighty downtown staff team, so we have to coordinate and collaborate with others. So to start with, Arlene Cheese Nelson is our DDRI Planning Analyst, and my right arm, she presented the last time for the user fees, so you should have a face to her name now. She's worked tirelessly with me the last 15 years in the downtown, and she continues to provide support to downtown Boca with research and analysis of these projects. In addition, she manages the Office Equivalency Database. She prepares OE and open space reports and activities regarding development projects, and she reviews and comments on IDAs, urban design requests, and business tax receipt zoning inquiries, and much more. We also have Carter Bogish, our Downtown Marketing Coordinator, and he prepares that wonderful list that you're going to read of activities and events at every meeting, and he actually has to scour different websites to get that information. We do have an option on our downtown Boca website for people to send their information to us, so I would recommend that our businesses try and seek downtownboca.org. We will capture that information, but if they don't send it to us, we're looking for it. So Carter puts all that information together. The downtown website is also going through a total refresh, and that is currently under his guidance. And related social media, he manages that. Review especially vent permits, the banners, signage. He also conducts weekly inspections now of all the items we have, which there are hundreds now, of signs, paver markers, and different accoutrement in the downtown with our downtown Boca brand on it, so we have to make sure that they are properly maintained and kept up with. Melissa Thomas is my Admin Land Records Assistant. She's the person who keeps me on track for meetings and scheduling of updates to the land records and addressing in the system, so she coordinates with our permit system so that the addressing is properly kept up to date for them, and she prepares the requisitions and pays the invoices for all of these projects that we have. She coordinates with all the vendors, as well as other city departments that are necessary that we work with, which I will go into some detail on that as well. So, speaking of other departments, finance, my A number one friends, Steve and Timberlake, and of course Jim Zervis, who assist us with the budget and the accounting and our spending. Their parking division works side by side with us in regards to the meters and any parking related matters. Sharice Vlahovski and Virginia Radzakowski. And of course, their purchasing team, Ivelsa Guzman and her staff. Recreation, we work with very diligently Kevin Beckman at the Meisner Park POA. They manage the maintenance contract, and we work with them on that. Sanborn Square, the water stations and recycling project, and we have to make sure that we're not doing things that they're not aware of, so communication is key, working with these other departments. Kevin's team, Julian Reese and Christopher McCollum, and of course, we coordinate with Amy DiNorsio from the Amphitheater. In Municipal Services, we work with Lauren Barak with the paver repairs, the water filling stations, Sanborn Square, and the survey team. Naresh Makavirapu, Transit and Mobility, including the Circuit Program that you all are very familiar with. Louis Tallico and Facilities Team, if it weren't for them, the oversized Adirondack chair would not have been put together and carried all the way out to Meisner Park, so we thank them for that. And also, we'll be working with them on the water filling stations in Meisner. And the traffic signals, Gary Jean and Steve Riley in regards to the digital kiosks. Downtown Code Enforcement Team, Dennis Spellman, Keith Benoit, Scott Newman, Dana Lobo, and from Police Department Sergeant Coronado. We coordinate once a week to make sure that we're all on the same page and share and exchange information. The Downtown Planning and Zoning Team, there are planners that are dedicated to downtown, Susan Lesser, Jacob Gurman, Neha James, Tamash Rahman, and Tori Boone, the zoning manager. And of course, IT, which gets involved in just about everything that we do. So I'm working with Jo Lynn Avery on the digital kiosks. And our Legal Department, Joni Hamilton and Jeff Scheffel. And of course, last but certainly not least, our City Managers Office, George, Andy, and Chrissy. And that is basically the complexity of all these projects. We work with everyone to get these things done, so we wanted to make sure that we had a shout out and a thank you because we couldn't do it without their help. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riley, and I want to say too, right back at you, I really appreciate the work that goes into doing these downtown updates. Now they're coming more frequently, and I really like to see, you know, the progress that has been made and what's on order, and it's getting us excited to, you know, what's to come and what's been done and with our centennial coming up. So I really appreciate all the hard work of everyone that you mentioned, especially, you know, your team, Ms. Cheese Nelson, Mr. Bogish, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Timberlake, Mr. Zervis, and everyone else that you mentioned as well. So does anyone else have any comments?
Madam Chair, I do, actually. Chess pieces. I'm disappointed to hear that we have any vandalism, and we've had a chair there for years, so this hopefully is a temporary thing, but just curious, the chess pieces, the knights always keep getting stolen?
They do. They're a very popular item, and they disappear. So what we have done is I had to create an inventory of all these types of things, so I basically buy two sets, and then as they disappear, I fill them in, and then we can't buy individual pieces without the downtown Boca branding. We have to buy the whole set, so as we check every week to make sure that all the pieces are there, that's basically what we have to do.
Right, well, hopefully the one or two knights that have gone stay that way, only those two. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Thanks, Ms. Riley. Mr. Brown?
Thank you. And thanks to everyone involved with the downtown work, for sure. It's a team effort, as Ms. Riley indicated, and remember that the city is reimbursed by the CRA for everybody's activities related to the CRA.
Yes, we'll remember that. Thank you.
I'm going to provide an update following up on the last meeting regarding the Center for Arts and Innovation, where there was discussion of our hiring a consultant to act as more or less an owner's representative as we continue through the process with the center. And thanks to Andy's work, we are going to be contracting with CBRE to provide consulting services to the city and CRA for the purpose of reviewing the center. Just by way of background from CBRE, they are the largest commercial real estate firm globally, a Fortune 138 company. They represent 90% of the Fortune 100. They have 115,000 employees globally, and they have an office here in the city. They are subject matter experts in government transactions, specifically P3s, most of which involve mixed-use projects, and many include government headquarters and civic buildings, as well as many different use types, offices, city hall, multifamily retail hotel, land golf and resorts, and other similar projects. With regard to performing arts centers, their team has assembled -- assists with the Performing Arts Center includes specialists in cost consultancy, project and construction management, financial consulting, evaluation, and advisory services, and they're led by the Public Sector Team. CBRE's partially owned subsidiary Turner &amp; Townsend are experts in cultural arts type buildings, so they will have a cultural arts expert, facilities expert on their team. We are in discussions with them right now to review the PCDA, the Preconstruction and Development Agreement, and the issues that have specifically been brought up for discussion between now and the 21st, the orientation of the Performing Arts Center and the amphitheater, concerns about valet, the shade and roof structure, and the underground garage, just to have comment on that. We've asked for specific input prior to the next meeting, so we will have something to provide. We're also asking them to review the financial terms so -- and just to advise us on their opinions with regard to that. The project manager for local lead is Matthew Kizia, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, and Ms. Caroline Montague from Turner &amp; Townsend is the Performing Arts Center's special subject matter expert. There will also be other representatives of the team. They have the internal capability to review the O and M and capital reserves and other future requirements of the PCDA on lease. They will probably be serving as in a development oversight capacity as we go forward. In other words, as owners rep during the construction, reviewing submittals, et cetera. As I mentioned, Andy has been working with them to develop a defined scope of work with this initial review and report, as well as a longer-term strategy for development oversight, and we hope to have this contractual relationship in place prior to the October 21st meeting so that we can advise you all that we are moving forward and give some preliminary feedback on what we've discussed so far. That's the update on the consultant. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Brown? Mr. Victor?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Lukasik, for getting this consultant on board as promptly as you did and as qualified as they are. If the consultant raises questions and things like that, does your authority allow you to amend the scope or add to the scope of work of the consultant as the, you know, as questions arise?
Yes, based upon the nature of the transaction we're looking at, which is a real estate transaction, those are services that I can contract for, up to a certain amount, and if it needs to come before the body, it will.
Okay, thank you. No further question.
Does anybody else, Mr. Singer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Brown, do you expect that contract to be in place with CBRE by the end of tomorrow?
I'm sorry?
Do you expect that contract to be in place with, or agreement or memo understanding or work order to be in place with CBRE by tomorrow?
Tomorrow, probably not, but by the end of the week.
Okay. I'll save the rest for Councilmember or Commissioner reports then. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Brown?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Deputy City Attorney, Mr. Kahler, do you have any report?
No reports, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll move on to Commissioner's Report, start on my left with Vice Chair Thompson.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singer.
I didn't save it long. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was speaking with Mr. Brown earlier today, as we have been, about where we might be with getting a consultant to help us generally analyze the transit-oriented community we're looking at. In fact, like, while I appreciate Ms. Riley's update on the downtown things, I think that getting that finalized and in place in light of some pending conversations is the most pressing issue. So I wanted to ask Mr. Brown the same question. Do you think you might have a consultant lined up in case we need to have conversations soon? And if not, then are there any roadblocks that we, as a council, need or a commission need to give direction on?
No, I don't think so. I think we'll be able to have a consultant in place within the next 10 days. I can't guarantee that, but that's what we're working toward.
Is there any roadblock that might prevent that from happening sooner that we might want to discuss now or tomorrow?
Other than the hurricane? No.
Yes, okay, very well. All right, if you can think of any before then, notwithstanding the weather, please let us know.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Ms. Drucker?
Just one quick thing, and I have another report for the next meeting, but we welcomed -- Ms. Naklis and I went to Crema Gourmet Coffee Shop in Meisner Park, great store, and I don't know if you were going to mention it, but just wanted to walk them to Boca. They have sandwiches, it's a really nice setup there, so we were there last, I guess this week or last week, well, last week, actually, so just wanted to mention that. Another business has opened in downtown in Meisner for you all to go check out.
Mr. Victor?
Thank you. I have just the framework for postponing the approval of the landlord plans as a discussion point today. Over the last 10 days or so, I've spent a lot of time, and I thank Mr. Kahler for spending that time with me and walking me through the complexities of an agreement. I'm sure a lot of you can appreciate that when you're coming into an agreement that's already signed and that there's already, you know, milestones and things happening, it -- sometimes it's a little difficult and complicated to appreciate where we are, so I appreciate you walking me through them. With respect to those things, though, as the presentation from the center was, you know, as Ms. Virgin indicated publicly several weeks ago, she doesn't have the current cost estimates, current operating, current operating pro forma, and a, again, an updated business plan with financial figures, and she claims that she'll have it by the end of the year. So, you know, in addition to the consultant being on board for them reviewing the landlord plans and all those things, you know, my conversations with Mr. Kahler and Mr. Brown have been that, well, the consultant should also be reviewing the financial aspects to this, and we don't have those yet, and it would be very difficult, at least for me, to, you know, approve a new concept plan that isn't more refined in terms of its financial impact, its cost, how much is the new cost compared to the old cost. Obviously, there's been a lot of speculation about the cost of, you know, undergrounding parking, you know, given the storm that's out there right now. I can't even think about undergrounding parking right now. I can't even, you know, anecdotally, we only have a few that are approved in this city, and I'm praying that, you know, that they fare okay, and I guess we'll have our own little statistics to see if this is a policy that we want to continue. So certainly, I do think this is a substantial change, and that it's important for the consultant to review not only the concept of the change, but the cost of the change, and the fact that we don't have that yet, I think, you know, makes me, you know, it gives me a great pause. So together with Mr. Kahler, I work through, together we work through the items that we think would be necessary for a brief amendment to go to a brief amendment with the center. And I think, obviously, you know, they're quite simple, actually, postponing the approval of the plans for the submitted, for the submitted updated plans, an updated cost analysis, both construction and operational costs, updated strategic business plan, which was a part of their submittal, which includes financial framework. The consultant's going to need time to review these once the financials are submitted, so we talked about them having 90 days to analyze and evaluate these things. Of course, also, Brookfield must approve these things, and in my opinion, Brookfield should be approving these things prior to the city council approving the landlord plans, because obviously, if they don't, then, you know, again, it's just, you know, it's just an exercise. Once we've received the updated financials, once the consultant has had an opportunity to review, then I think we'd be in a better position to make an informed decision about these things. Obviously, them meeting the second milestone is also happening around the same time, or happening at next month, or in a couple of weeks, rather, so that'll be important. So, again, pursuant to number seven on this little list, I think what we'd be asking for here, or at least to have a discussion, Madam Chair-- for here, or at least to have a discussion, Madam Chair, is to have an amendment to the PCA including these things.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggler. So you're looking to take action today to make an amendment?
Well, I believe, Mr. Kahler, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we'd need to have some sort of consensus to direct staff to work on a proposed amendment to be in place before the October 21st, the next meeting. Is that correct?
Deadline.
The framework that Commissioner Wiggler, you're referring to, would not require anything in place before the 21st, but you would, I think your intent today was to present this to your fellow commissioners to see if there was a consensus or any appetite for this. But no, an amendment would not, if that was the CRA's desire, would not be in place by the 21st, but the action you'd be taking would be to defer approval of the plans on the 21st, if that was the CRA's desire, is my understanding, is how you articulate.
Very good.
Okay, so, does anybody have any questions? Because I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Okay. Mr. Kahler, at one point in the agreement, is Brookfield's approval required?
I believe that the agreement requires the approval prior to the middle of an IDA application.
Okay. And, Mr. Brown, when is the next financial deadline?
October 22nd.
That's the date of our next meeting?
It's the day after the next meeting.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions? Ms. Drucker?
So, a couple of things. So the last time we met, which was about 10 days ago, we kind of came to some decisions of like, we're deferring to October 21st to receive a consultant, et cetera, et cetera. We have now got to enter this consultant agreement that's going to help us through this process. So, Mr. Wiggler, is there something that you know, that you found out? Because, oh, the other part that we were missing is that the center was going to start having meetings individually with some of us, and I think those are kind of being coordinated as we speak. So is there any information that you've been privy to that would preempt you to bring this up before we've had those opportunities to meet with the center and also before our next meeting? Because that's not kind of what we agreed on 10 days ago. So I kind of was surprised when we got this this morning, because we did talk about amendments, and we did talk about possibly doing this. And by the way, good on the consultant, I agree with cost analysis, updates, et cetera. I'm just wondering if you're privy to something that we're not, and, because this is, this document is, you know, very, changes a lot of what has already been put into place in the past two and a half years. So I just kind of want to know where this is coming from so that I could have a better understanding.
Sure. No, happy to, happy to discuss it. No, there's no, there's no other information other than my reading of the agreement again and again, my discussions with Mr. Kahler and Mr. Brown about the fact that the concept, at least in my opinion, has substantially changed, and we don't know what the costs of those things, what the costs of those changes are going to be. And like I said, it would be hard for me to make a decision on a financial basis that could negatively impact the taxpayers if it doesn't go forward, or in the worst-case scenario, if a bankruptcy or some other adverse financial event were to happen in the middle of construction or after construction. So not knowing those costs is material to my decision. So upon reflection after those meetings and reading them again and again, and talking with the city attorney's office, these are some of the issues that I saw were critical to me making a landlord's, a landlord's plan. Now, with everything you just said, Ms. Drucker, I don't disagree. This agreement has been in place for two and a half years, and in two and a half years, other than the initial $95 million, initial estimate cost that was in place two and a half years ago, we've received no financial, the cities received no financial update other than their fundraising goals. So I am concerned, and without substantial ability to review those before me making a decision, I would be in doubt.
And I guess my other question, because we have been in a partnership with the center, have you discussed this proposal with the center, or you're discussing with us? Or is this a first?
I'm discussing with my colleagues first.
First. Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Of course. Any other questions?
No.
Comments?
I'll go first. I'm happy to have this discussion. I'm just today seeing this for the first time, so I'm going to, I'll think about it. I'm not, if you're asking for direction now, the answer is no, but I'm happy to think about it some more, maybe we could talk about it more. Probably it's going to get teed up at our next meeting in two weeks, so, but probably, my guess is that's when, if there's going to be some sort of deferral or direction given to issue some sort of, what looks to me to be like an ultimatum for an amendment, I think that's going to probably take place then. It's not going to, at least for me, it's not taking place today.
Mr. Singer?
Thank you. I appreciate Mr. Wiggler's concerns about not having all the information. I was in this situation several years ago. We did not proceed with the consultant then. We went to agreement. I had concerns about both those things. The agreement's in place now. And the letter I got back, the email I got back on Saturday from Ms. Virgin suggested that they wanted to raise some other concerns about, that we're already negotiating the agreement. I'm not in favor of that. As I said at last meeting, I'd rather be able to try to address the specific concerns that seem a little earlier than they would be for where the landlord timing sets out in the process, and condition our approval based on satisfactory elements of that. At least I get to have this meeting. We've been trying to schedule it. It's now scheduled for Wednesday, subject to weather changes, I presume. I wanted to have it before we started discussing this, but before next meeting, so be it. At least last week or last meeting, the center seemed to indicate some general agreement to the idea that if we had concerns about landlord plans, or the parking, or the circulation, that we could address those later as part of the IDA, just to give us that extra pair of suspenders to go with a pretty strong belt that already exists in the agreement. The only other thing, our escalation of costs, I talked about that. We do have one escalator for maintenance, nothing for working capital, and nothing for endowment, and I know that those are not tied directly to construction costs, but there is some interrelation. I don't know if we're going to get clarity on that until we get the final plans feted by a third party, and they're even finalized. And I'm a little concerned about perhaps giving, if we extend a deadline, the center's going to look to extend a host of deadlines. In fact, they already seem to be negotiating back. I have no interest in doing that. I think the agreement is already quite favorable to the center and still preserves, you know, we did what we could to make it better for taxpayers. I'm not interested in reopening those conversations. So what I would suggest instead, if we have concerns, is try to punt what we can in terms of the definition of threshold concept plan changes, condition our approval that way. Mr. Kahler was drafting some language, or picked up where I said last time at the day as I was trying to draft on the fly, which relate to the use of underground parking and valet parking, and also the canopy design, to the extent that three of us feel that's a really material change. We could push back on that and condition the design that they provide protection from the rain. And then proportionality on cost escalation, I was just saying, if the construction cost threshold rises by more than X percent, they have to gross up the endowment and working capital reserve by that similar percent. Since I mentioned this from the day as two weeks ago, I've not had a conversation yet with the center yet. I don't know what their response is. I think that would be prudent, though, and I think it fits into what a landlord would seek for some, a tenant doing their own improvements on their property. I'm less concerned about the issue about third-party approval from Brookfield. That's a separate standalone provision. It's a chicken and egg problem, which would come first. In this sense, I can see logic for what it is, but regardless, it's in the agreement. So I don't want to delay, and I get that that may be unavailing to some of us. It is not entirely availing to me, but we're down this path now, and I think opening up a whole series of deadlines causes more unintended consequences for us as the counterparty than we might get, and I think we can try to address some of the concerns, given the framework we're within.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Mr. Wiggler, do you have any?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Mayor Singer. I think, you know, in the spirit of what I'm talking about, conditioning approval based on certain cost analyses is certainly critical. Obviously, there isn't a whole IDA process, but again, our discussion last week, or two weeks ago, was talking about the difference between the landlord's approval and the IDA and the regulatory approval, so that if we do have concerns about the, you know, material changes there, there has to be some way that we haven't lost the opportunity to consent there. So, you know, like Mr. Thompson said, I'm happy to see what happens in the next two weeks before the thing, but I did want to say my thoughts, get my thoughts out there because, like I said, it's a very, very complicated agreement. Not all agreements are just set in stone, especially one of this, one of this nature, and certainly when we're looking at the best deal for the taxpayers, and we're considering the taxpayer funding of the site, and what it can mean if it doesn't work out financially, you know, I think we should be, you know, very, very cautious and have our consultant on board with us before we make those major decisions. So happy to revisit the conversation next week.
Thank you, Mr. Wiggler. And yes, I also think, you know, obviously, I love the idea of the center, but there's a lot of questions, which hopefully we'll all get to ask and have our questions answered, and when we come back in two weeks, we'll have some more clarity than we, than we all have now. And then, since Mr. Kahler reaffirmed that we don't have to have consensus today on doing this, that if we want to do an amendment, we can figure it out in two weeks when we come back. Correct?
Not an amendment to the agreement, but if the CRA wanted to direct that today, you would direct staff to work on it. But no, the decision to meet with the center and to proceed and consider taking action on the 21st, that's, that doesn't require any action today.
We can wait till then. Okay. All right. So I would say, yes, we come back in two weeks with, hopefully, some of our questions answered, and we move on from there. Anything else? Okay. So I have my short report, and of course, I'd like to thank Downtown Manager Ruby Riley and apparently Mr. Carter Bogish for putting together an update of the upcoming events in the downtown. So, October 9th at 6:00 PM, we have the Boca Raton Historical Society will welcome art historian Deborah Pollak for their Town Hall Talk. Ms. Pollak will present her latest publication, Florida Sculptors and Their Work, 1880 to 2020, which tells the fascinating stories of creative Florida artists and reveals secrets behind their three-dimensional art, from realistic to abstract to folk art. Get more information at BocaHistory.org. October 11th at 5:00 PM, this is your opportunity to enjoy great food and music while supporting a great cause at the Meisner Park Amphitheater. The FAU chapter of Alpha Tau Omega presents the Buffalo Bash with buffalo-style cuisine, live music, games, and proceeds being donated to the 22 Project, a local charity committed to helping disabled veterans suffering from PTSD and traumatic brain injuries rehabilitate and reintegrate into civilian life. Learn more at MeisnerAmp.com. Here's what's coming up at the Funky Biscuit, October 11th at 9:00 PM, and October 12th at 8:00 PM, The New Orleans Suspects, the music of little feet. October 16th at 7:00 PM, Good Bread. October 18th at 9:00 PM, All About Carlos, a tribute in Santana. October 19th at 8:00 PM, Jeff Scott Soto and Jason Beeler. Get your tickets at FunkyBiscuit.com. October 12th at 11:00 AM, Beer Gardens Oktoberfest Porsche Car Show brings you a day of luxury cars, great drinks, and fantastic music. Stop by for special drink offers and samples, live music by Spread the Dub, and some of the most beautiful cars in South Florida. Learn more at Facebook.com/BeerGardenBoca. October 19th and 20th, beginning at 10:00 AM, the Boca Pumpkin Patch Festival is back at Meisner Park Amphitheater. This event will feature carnival rides for all ages, fall-themed photo ops, a scarecrow village, food and alcohol, a cornstalk maze, pumpkin decorating, and more. Get your tickets now at MeisnerAmp.com. October 20th at 11:00 AM, join yogi Leslie Glickman, who hosts the Free Yoga in the Park classes at Sanborn Square on weekends, let's see, for yoga in the museum at the Boca Raton Museum of Art. No experience is necessary for this splendid vinyasa yoga and artistic inspiration, and small bites and smoothies from downtown Boca favorites. Kixi Cafe and Long Story Short Cafe will be served following the program. Learn more and get your tickets at BocaMuseum.org. October 30th at 7:00 PM, Gourmet File on East Palmetto Park Road presents their Revolver Wine Company tasting, featuring delicious wines paired with cheese and charcuterie, and light by Revolver Wine Company owner and winemaker, Mr. Brian Page. Visit GourmetFile.com for tickets soon. The rest of their October tastings have already sold out. And if you dine at Lock Bar in Meisner Park this month, make it a rosé. For every rosé poured during October, Lock Bar will donate $1 to the American Cancer Society. It's a great way to support a great cause. Learn more at their Facebook page, Facebook.com/LockBarBoca. Thank you, Ms. Riley, for sharing all that. Just a couple other things, a couple reminders, to please visit DowntownBoca.org and to download the My Boca app to keep up with all the happenings downtown and to report concerns. We have some weather headed our way, so please make sure you sign up and stay up to date with the city's community alerts, including for emergencies, weather, and Boca PD alerts by texting ALERTBOCA, one word. If you don't do it as one word, you'll end up with alerts from another state to 38276. That's one word, ALERTBOCA to 38276. Of course, please make sure you have the Circuit app on your mobile device so you can access the free Boca Connect Shuttle in downtown. Please continue to visit and support all of the businesses in the downtown, especially the many small locally-owned businesses and restaurants in the downtown. And if you have any ideas you'd like to share with me, please send me an email to Fnaklis@myboca.us or give me a call. I'd love to hear from you. With that, and no other business to come before us, we are adjourned at 2:12 PM.
Good afternoon and welcome to a workshop meeting in the Boca Raton City Council. It is Monday, October 7th, 2024. The time is 2:16. And as it's October 7th, even though Chair Naklis at our CRA meeting shortly ago gave a very moving, um, call for a moment of silence, I would like to do the same at today's meeting as well. It has been a year to the day of, since the murder of more than 1,200 innocent civilians, murders that were brutal, horrific, and broadcast to inflict terror and further pain among the victims and their families. Since then, we've seen more continuous attacks and violence in Israel by Iran and terror proxies and more demonizing and dehumanizing and stereotyping that has come along with an alarming rise of antisemitism abroad and in our own nation. And while I'm proud that our council members individually last year, those of us who were here individually took a moment to speak from the heart and said that they stood with Israel and that our community usually strong and usually strong uniformly stand strong against hate in all its forms, that we see a rise in antisemitism and hate throughout college campuses, large cities, and other places. And I think it's appropriate that we remember the victims who were so horrifically taken from us and stand witness to that their memory not be overshadowed by those who would seek to politicize it and minimize it. So would you please join in a moment of silent reflection? Thank you. We have no proclamations or presentations today, so we'll turn to board interviews. Our first board for which we're seeking applicants is our civil service board. I see one of our applicants present. Would you please come forward, give your name and address, and tell us why you'd like to keep serving? Welcome, Ms. Mulholland.
Good afternoon, everyone, um, council members. My name is Lisa Mulholland. I live at 875 Aurelia Street in Boca Raton. I am a 12-year resident of the city and I think I've been a member of the civil service board for two terms, maybe three. I'm here today because I'm interested in serving another term, if that is your desire. My profession is as a grant writer. I work for Inrem Solutions, which is a municipal grant writing firm. My education is from the University of Delaware and the Dickinson School of Law. I practiced law for seven years before switching into grant writing. I have three children and I'm married to John Mulholland. I'm a big volunteer in the community and I've been a member of the Junior League of Boca Raton and past president, and I'm a co-founder of Impact 100 and like to thank our two Impact 100 members that are here today. And I'm interested in, in serving if you all would like, like me to help in that way. That's all I have. Anything else?
I think that's a lot. Uh, council members, any questions? Ms. Mulholland, how many times has the board met in the last year or two, if you can recall?
It's only met once in all my times of service. It was, it was poised to meet twice, but that one was canceled.
Very good. Well, hopefully that's a testament to the fact that we have very few matters that need the board's review.
Absolutely. Yes.
All right. Well, thank you for your desire to continue serving.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you. Any other applicants for the Civil Service Board? Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. My first time applying for this position as a board member. I had no idea they only met once in the past two years. Thought I'd be contributing a little bit more. Good afternoon. I want to thank you for the opportunity to apply for this position as a board member. My name is Thomas Maloney. So let me give you some background about myself. I've been a Boca Raton resident for the past 10 years. I've lived in Florida for the past 12. I'm a married, married father of a 26-year-old son who's attended a local, a local Boca Raton High School and he just graduated from FAU with his master's degree back in the spring. Prior to this, I lived in New York. I worked for the New York City Police Department. I have over 18 years in law enforcement. I served in various capacities throughout New York City. I retired as a police sergeant in 2009. After moving to Florida in 2012, I successfully completed the Florida State Law Enforcement Certification Course. I volunteered at my son's high school throughout his high school years. Afterwards, I became a big brother. I guess I missed having my son around, became a big brother with the Palm Beach County Big Brothers Association. I've gotten involved with numerous water cleanups. I have a small little boat and I use the Boca ramp. I love it over there. And, um, been doing numerous, uh, waterway cleanups as well as the beach. Pardon me. Currently, I'm working the upcoming elections as a poll inspector. I have a strong sense of community. I feel a need to serve and give back. I believe my background gives me a strong idea of right and wrong. I understand, I understand the fairness and accountability. I'm used to handling tough questions, tough decisions while staying impartial. I have firsthand experience with rules and processes involved in a smooth-running civil service operation. That combined with my knowledge of law enforcement, I feel that makes me a great fit for the position. Thank you very much for your consideration. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. One thing I just didn't ask, your address, please.
Oh, sorry about that. 92 Northwest 12th Avenue. I'm in East Boca, right off Palmetto Park Road.
Very good. Thank you. Council members, any questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Maloney. Uh, yes, as was said, this board does not meet that often and we only have one vacancy now. However, we do have many boards for which we seek residents to, uh, serve. So you might find, if you're not appointed to this, you might find an opportunity to serve there.
Sounds good. I'll look on the website. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I will note that for all our applicants today, we will make the appointments tomorrow night. You do not need to attend tomorrow night to be considered. Your interview today suffices. Any other applicants for this board? Then we'll turn to the environmental, excuse me, the community advisory panel. Do we have the applicant here? Yes, welcome. Please give your name and address and tell us in up to three minutes why you'd like to serve.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lorraine Blank. Um, I live at 545 Northwest 7th Street, spitting different, different distance from town hall. Um, and I've lived in Boca for three years now. My background is I have a PhD in policy analysis and I worked in developing countries for 30 years. And as part of that unique experience, I had to go into countries, go into communities, go into villages, and listen to communities and hear what they had to say about the social safety nets in their countries and then work to, um, work with the World Bank and other international development agencies to design actionable projects to improve the social safety nets. So, and when I lived for 16 years in Jamaica, I was a member of a community and there I worked actively to write grants to rebuild our community center for low-income children and start active school programs. So I've always been very active in communities, um, and want to be active here. And right now, I'm also volunteering at the Milagro Center as a mentor. And I've just almost completed a two-year renovation of a 1955 house in Boca that every other bidder wanted to tear down, but I'm incredibly committed to preserving Boca. And a part of old history, I grew up in Florida. We came in 1950. I'm not new to Florida, though I'm new and I'm new coming back. I came home, but Florida's always been home. My mother turned 99 last week in Florida, in Miami. I'm always in Florida or I always came back and now I'm finally home and I'd like to serve. Questions?
Thank you very much for your desire to serve. Council members, any questions? All right. As was said, we'll make the appointments tomorrow night and you do not need to attend then, although you're welcome to.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes all of our board interviews because we have no applicants yet for the environmental advisory board nor the permitting and construction review board. So at this time, we'll open the Florida public request. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Jonathan Ungian, 6501 Congress Avenue. So it was brought to my attention last week, which I forwarded the email to, to all of you, uh, and council, um, that with the project next door, the development, uh, that a tentative, uh, suggestion of the parameters to resolve the code enforcement case was going back between, uh, Jamie Danberg and, uh, Mr. Brown. And, uh, I wholeheartedly, as you know, have stated the need for the other portion of the development, not just a very profitable one for the developer, uh, but the one that was needed for the community. Um, and I've also suggested that that corner parcel, uh, for I don't know how long that I've been coming here, uh, that it, it shouldn't be a bank, um, that maybe there's a restaurant use, which was the discussion that finally happened, it appears, between the city and this negligent property owner. Um, and my only, well, actually I've got a few question, one question, um, but a couple of points. And if you've seen that, that I forwarded to you all, uh, I think there were a couple of concerns. And that being, um, that there's going to be a site plan amendment, which would be just for that corner parcel in essence, because they're keeping the 8,000 square feet to move it from a bank to a restaurant, fast food, whatever it may be, which would need, which could have been proposed at any point over the last two years, um, with a minor site plan amendment. And the suggestion was, I couldn't determine exactly how it read and I'm asking Mr. Brown and I've asked him in an email, um, is it 15 months to get that site plan amendment and to build it? Or is it 15 months to get the site plan and to submit the permits and then another 12 months to build, in essence, eight, 9,000 square feet? The man next door built 293,000 square feet in a year, a year and a quarter. And, you know, I think 15 months is reasonable. Uh, I think 27 months just is rubbing the salt in the wounds of the community that Mr. Danberg finally stated how vibrant of an existing workforce community we have here has needed. Um, and then beyond that, I, I strongly suggest, which council can suggest to staff, as there's nothing finalized, that this party is not considered in compliance of code just by signing this agreement and by paying a fine. And my concern, and I want to state on the record here, and if I can get just a minute, I know it's a quiet day, my concern has never been taxing Mr. Danberg for a fine. My whole thing is I want the same thing as the city, which is compliance and to see a development there. It's never been about financially hurting Mr. Danberg. I could care less that they doubled it or that it's 18 or that it was 9,000 or that it's 78 or 150,000. I could care less. But I think that that fine and a fine is part of this agreement, that if they don't hit the deadlines that are stipulated in this agreement, that start right then or maybe even potentially backdate are critical and necessary for achieving compliance. And so those are my only two concerns is to clarify whether it's what, 15 months total to get this thing, site plan permitted and built? Or is it 27, which I think is a very, very long time for a minor site plan amendment? Um, and then also just the penalty phase, because I think that people get penalized that are in code enforcement for a lot less and a lot less time. Um, and I think that needs to be hashed out and council can work to a satisfactory resolution with the staff, because staff reports to council, council reports to us, the community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make any public request of the city council? Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the time for public requests. We'll turn to review of regular agenda items. This is an opportunity for questions concerning tomorrow night's agenda. I'll start with Mr. Thompson.
I have no questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Naklis.
No questions.
Ms. Drucker.
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you. And we have no future agenda matters or items of public concern, so I'll turn to city manager reports and I believe we have a presentation on our key performance indicators for the 2024-2025 strategic plan. Mr. Brown?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lucasik, our deputy city manager is going to make this presentation. I thank him for his work on the entire strategic plan process.
Welcome, Mr. Brown. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So, uh, this is sort of the next phase of our strategic plan development. So we've, we've gotten, uh, we've gotten to a point where we have a fairly robust plan in place. Uh, now we're taking those next steps and starting to, uh, work on the reporting structure, uh, which will include some metrics so that we have a way to measure and see how we're performing our, uh, performance as an organization relative to the strategic, uh, focus areas and the strategic priorities that you've identified as part of the strategic plan. So my, my goal, my objective for today is to walk you through some of the high-level KPIs that we've developed at a staff level, see if you think that they dovetail with where you want to go from a strategic focus area perspective and see if we need to make any adjustments. Okay? So moving forward, um, just a couple of things to bear in mind as we're looking at the suggested KPIs. Uh, as I just mentioned, you know, those KPIs are metrics, they're measures, uh, to try to see where we're going. Uh, they're objective data to evaluate our success. So, uh, right now we do a lot of anecdotal comparisons. These will give us some objective measures to see, okay, well, where are we going? Are we hitting target? Are we moving in the right direction? Uh, it'll give us that ability to do some regular monitoring. Uh, so depending upon how often data is available, we'll be able to check, see how we're doing. Uh, we'll be able to see, see for a successful or see if there might be a need for a change in approach, you know, because maybe we're not going in the direction that we need. So that'll give us a little bit of an indication as to what we might need to change. Um, and then it helps align the organization with those strategic focus areas and those strategic priorities that we've established in the, in the strategic plan. Um, you know, the common phrase, what gets measured gets done. So staff will be paying attention to those measures, which is really important, uh, because staff will be focusing on those measures. So if those measures aren't, uh, appropriate or we're trying to measure the wrong things, uh, might steer us in the wrong direction. So it's really important that we think about what it is that, uh, we're asking to measure as we're going forward. Uh, and then a couple of words of caution, just gave you one of those. Uh, if we don't pick the right measurements, you know, we could be going in the wrong direction. So we want to make sure that we're, we're thinking about those things. Um, also important to make sure that, um, from a leadership perspective, that we're thinking and we're making sure that we're coaching staff, uh, to think broadly and not just think about the numbers. So if we get too focused in on the numbers, we could start losing focus of the, uh, what's going on in the forest, you know, getting pinned down into the trees and not thinking about globally what it is that you're trying to accomplish, uh, for the community. Um, and then, and then lastly, as we're talking about the KPIs, um, if you have, if you have some concerns about some of the measures that we're suggesting or you have some questions about them, one thing to think about is making sure that whatever measures we pick, um, or that we, we want to hone in on, uh, that they're, that that data is easy to collect and it's easy to manage. Uh, if it's, if it's difficult to collect it or, um, we have a hard time managing it going forward, um, it just makes it that much more difficult to keep those measures up and keep that, uh, focus on, on those particular, um, areas of concern for the community. Okay. So the way that I've organized this is that I've provided information on the strategic focus areas and the strategic priorities. So I can, I can go back and forth of the slides if you need to see what some of those descriptions are that we have in the strategic plan. Uh, but my, my goal today is to get right to the KPIs, see if you have any questions about what we've suggested at a high level. Um, and if I need to go back to these descriptions so that, um, you can compare, we can do that. But my goal is to, you know, kind of jump right into those measures and see what kind of questions or comments that you have. Okay. So for community safety, uh, we identified three high-level measures, crime incidents, and we'll be using the NiBRS, uh, data to report out on that. Uh, they're used, we used to use the unified crime data. FBI switched to NiBRS. Uh, it's far more telling, it's far more detailed, it's far more granular than, uh, universal, uh, excuse me, uh, uniform, uh, reporting. Um, so we're gonna, because not that many communities in Florida have adopted it, we'll do a comparison internally. So we'll see what our trending, what our trend lines are. So we'll, we'll look at the average number of crimes over a period of time and see what our trending is, um, to kind of guide and, um, understand what we're doing in terms of crime incidents. The next measure that we'll look at, uh, is a, uh, a perception, uh, perception number. So we're going to get, we're getting ready to conduct a citizen perception survey, um, in January. One of the questions that we'll ultimately have in there is going to be related to safety. Um, I use, if you look at the benchmark or the metric, um, I use, if you look at the benchmark or the metric, I gave a suggestion of 90%, 95% of residents indicate they feel safe or extremely safe. Now, I don't know exactly what language we'll use within the survey, but generally, those top two tiers are something that we might want to compare to when we're thinking about citizen perception of survey. Now, it's pretty broad. It could include everything from PD, could include fire, could include traffic, you know, somebody walking on a sidewalk. Whatever it might be, it could be a broad interpretation, so it's not necessarily just associated with crime, because that's what a lot of people will think when they're taking a look at these things. But it could be any, any factor that's associated with safety. And then lastly, because of our interest in pedestrian and bicycle mobility throughout the community, we wanted to take a look at the number of accidents involving pedestrians or bicyclists. So kind of tying into the vision zero concept, making sure that we're including that into the community safety piece. So those are the three high-level measures that we have for our community safety. Any questions on those? Any concerns about those?
Ms. Knackles.
Mr. Lukasik, I would just add, under the benchmark, not only number of accidents, but also near misses.
So, so to, to that point of how we're going to collect that data, we'll see if there's anything available for us to be able to do that. Understand the point, for sure. But, but again, just trying to be able to collect that data, we'll see what we have, and then we can go from there. But I've jotted it down.
Mr. Thompson.
I was just going to jump in and say the same thing. I'm sure you and I probably both have been involved in near misses, and I, I'm not sure I reported it to the police, right? And I think that's probably true for most folks, so it's, that's one of those difficult to collect and assess things, but I still think it's worth checking that out, because if somebody was sufficiently upset by it that they reported it, then it is a significant incident, I think.
Agreed.
Ms. Drucker.
Thank you. Also, some of the movements for the TPAs are going away from the term accident to crash, because they're not always, sometimes it's not a real accident if you get crashed into. So we all took pledges a couple of months ago, maybe like this year, I don't remember when, they're changing the terminology to crash provisions. And also for staff, and I'm sure you're aware of this, but the TPA does a really good job of tracking this data already with live maps, and anywhere there's been an accident reported in the entire county, you can click there where they've been, whether it's car, whether it's on the track, whether it's on the bike, et cetera, et cetera. I know we're only tracking pedestrian and bicycle accident slash crash, but they track on all different angles, and it's already live data that we can access pretty readily available. If you just click on the, on the map, it'll come up. But they're moving away, the state FDOT, we're kind of, they're all moving away from accident to more of a crash because of what Mr. Thompson and Ms. Knackles said. Some of them are near misses, and some of them are really not accidents, people are literally crashing into people. So maybe we got to change the terminology with that.
Mr. Lukasik, let me, let me use this, let me make some general comments that apply to this slide, and then this general slide. First, I think it's important that we're benchmarking, and in fact, we probably should have been doing more as a city holistically a long time ago, so this is overdue. Second, I think it's also helpful, as we're benchmarking internally by year-to-year improvement, we're also understanding where we relate to other cities. So we do that, for example, with crime incidents, we've already been tracking that even before the rollover to the NiBRS system with, you know, the predecessor system. We, we compare our decrease in crime to other cities' increases. I think we can do that across the board. 95% does strike me as very aspirational, which is fine. Vision zero is aspirational, but 95, it's hard to get 95% of people to agree on something. Only 89% of people voted free May in our last contested election, so that's a comparison. Thank you for the courtesy laugh. But still, 95%, I would like that. Just consider, I don't know what other cities use in that metric. And then on the number of accidents, or crashes, collisions, maybe, we might want to compare that to, to bike miles and trips, and have some ratio there, because it's not, the number of collisions is one number, if you contextualize it and then compare it to other cities, of similar size and similar bike paths and multi-use paths, knowing a per vehicle miles, a relevant statute, a relevant standard. We use vehicle miles, collisions per vehicle miles on, for traditional car accidents, so that might be another comparator.
Further complaints? Mr. Rigder.
No, thank you. I think along the lines of what my colleagues were saying, in terms of certain things that might be hard to measure, I know there is, as Ms. Drucker said, there's, you know, a crash statistics page, and I know we have one locally, which, where you could find where the crashes occurred. But I think it's also kind of important, if it can be, you know, statistically, if you could find out if there's certain conflict points that have, you know, excessive crashes in certain places. And I think people like us, and, you know, bikers and pedestrians out there, you know, there's certain spots that are known conflict points that might not show up in an average statistical analysis, or if the gross number, perhaps, you know, the gross number, with God's help, will go down, but, you know, a localized conflict point might go up, and you might lose some of that specialized data in the, in the larger metrics. So, you know, that would be my only thought. Like I said, I appreciate it might be difficult to find some of those conflict points, you know, in terms of, you know, in terms of mapping where the accidents are actually occurring, but that, that could be helpful in the future. Thanks.
Further comments on this? Ms. Knackles.
Just one last one, that Ms. Drucker had mentioned, the TPA, but also our own Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board, this may be a good task for them to help out on, so we're always looking for something to task them with, and they certainly are all riding their bikes and walking around, so they could probably help out.
Thank you, Mr. Lukasik. Yours?
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. Next, we'll go to quality of life. Three suggested measures for our quality of life. First one is an increase in the city's tree canopy. So a lot of discussion in our description of quality of life about sustainability and livability. So that, that increase in the tree canopy and the number of trees throughout the community is going to be important. Using, so the next one, using the citizen perception survey again, having a residence expressing a sense of community. I didn't put a mayor, a number down in, in this one in particular, Mayor, because, you know, I'm not sure what it should be quite yet, so we need to think about that internally in terms of a benchmark. But, but again, a general question that generally comes from those perception surveys, and it'll be a good one to help understand the perception of quality of life. And then, and then lastly, as we talk a lot about community, and we talk a lot about engagement, cities, one of the measures can be the city-sponsored events and the number of participants. And the other, the other piece that we might want to add to that, that I was thinking about after the fact, in terms of having a quality metric, might be some sort of evaluation of the, of the attendees, you know, give them some sort of simple feedback ability so that we understand, you know, what do they like about the events, what do they not like, you know, so on and so forth. So we, we gave an initial suggestion, just a number of events and how many participants are there, but there might be a quality type of evaluation that we might be able to do to understand what people are thinking about once, once they attend an event and then they, they walk away. So those are the three that we're suggesting for quality of life. Any, any thoughts, suggestions?
Comments?
Yes, please. This one, I think, was going to be very difficult to get numerical data on. Quality of life is just some, probably going to be very difficult to do in that way. I like these as a starting point, particularly the second one, because you're going to get a baseline sense from residents when they, when they respond. The city-sponsored events and participants is going to be tricky, because anybody who's gone to these events knows that it's a large portion are non-residents, and a lot of folks from West Boca, North South, everywhere, anybody who's tried to campaign in one of these events will learn that painfully, because you'll find that just very, very, that's few, but it's not obviously exclusive to just city residents. So that, on the spot, I can't think of any better way to create metrics for the quality of life, so this is a good start, but I think this one's going to be difficult to quantify.
Further comments? If not, I'll add it, oh, Mr. Rigder, please.
No, to Mr. Thompson's point, do you think it would be helpful if we, or if it was possible to measure, what's the resident participation rate? Is it, would, would that help us? Would that answer some of those things, that who's actually coming to, to our events? And are we, are we doing the right thing? Like, are we, are we doing it for the right, you know, populace?
Maybe, but I may default to say that's going to be difficult to, to assess, because, for example, like the summer series, people go, we don't have to have tickets, they just walk in, they enjoy free music, cover bands, whatever, you know, Rock of Eva or whatever. And it's not like, we're like, hey, you, are you a city resident? You know, it's, it, if we have ticketed performances and you have to, like, give a credit card to see where you're paying from, maybe that's one thing, but that may be difficult to do. And I think of two, like, we used to have art festivals in, in Meisner, in Meisner Park, in Sanborn Square also, same thing. We're not, we're not, we're not IDing people when they come in. Maybe we could do it by way of the survey and ask how many of the residents went to a community event at Meisner Park or at Sanborn Square, you can get data that way, but based on, like, doing it the opposite, what I think would prove to be probably difficult.
Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I think it's, it's hard, because you're right, when you ask people where are they coming from, a lot of them, especially with Live Nation, they're coming to our city outside of the city, which is what we want. We want people to come into our city on the bright line or on wherever, dry rail, wherever, however they get here. I'm thinking, and the events that we sell, so like, there's certain things that we promote that we had at the Meisner Park Amphitheater, there, there is a way, I'm sure there's a way to say, are you a resident, when you buy your ticket? That would capture the data immediately, but those are only for our own operated events, so I'm thinking, I don't, I don't know IT, so I don't know if that's possible, or if you could just add the coding, but that would be some good data there, if you're, like, buying tickets to the circus that comes every year, the Swiss, I forget the thing, that one. You could add, like, are you a resident? Yes and no. That would give you good data on a lot of the events. Some of those are through the, the MPA, the Meisner Park Amphitheater, like, sold through our city. So that could be a way to get at least those events, and those are city. But everything else would be hard to track, because you ask people, and in my experience, most of the time, they're not, they're not residents. They don't live here, they come to our events.
Further comments? Please.
I don't want to mean to cut you off, Mayor. I think one component of, and I think all of our children here, if we've lived in the city, have participated in, like, athletics, sporting events for children. That, our recreation in the city is out of this world, in my view. I know that to be true anecdotally, but I think it's objective. I would, it would be good if we could figure out a way to, to quantify how much those recreation and sports, youth sports, can contribute to the quality of life here. I think that can, you know, it, talk about community, family-building experiences, that's what those are. And we know from both visiting other cities and from participation in our own city leagues here, how good we have it. So I think that would be a good metric, if we could try to, and maybe it's part of the resident survey, the perception survey, but that participation in recreation and sports here in the city, I think, contributes to the quality of life, so maybe we can try and add that as a quantifier.
Further comments? Mr. Rigder.
Sorry. Mr. Lukasik, when, when, the citizen perception survey, to Mr. Thompson's point, is it more of like a household, is it per house, is it a household census or something like that? Or how is it being administered?
Usually, they'll, they'll ask for, let's, let's see, how have they done it? They, they've asked for, like, the, the individual with the
Decision-making.
Closest birthday, or something of that, along those lines. So someone is responding to it. Now, how it actually gets done, when they receive it, is beyond me. So, you know, it could be, it could be a whole community affair when they're responding to it, or someone just sits down and actually does it, and it might not meet that criteria.
No, but just to Mr. Thompson's suggestion, which is a valid one, which is, you know, if, if you're answering for the household, you know, if it's just me answering, do you participate in recreation? No, or, you know, in saber soccer, no, but does someone in your household, or, you know, how important is that to you? Like, there's a whole level of the household participation rate, that's not just the citizen, it's citizen versus, you know, families, or citizen versus households, so, and there might be, if there's a way to capture more global, you know, like, unit data, household data.
Yeah, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. So to that point, understanding what you're trying to get at now, there, we will have a couple of questions that we can ask more broadly, so we, we could capture something like that. We can ask that specific question and ask about their participation, their family's participation in our recreation programs or our athletic programs. Okay.
Further comments or questions on this?
Just one more question. So is the citizen perception survey, is that something we can share on social media? Like, I've been sharing the League of American Bicyclists survey that's been open for three months. Is it going to be something that we can share that's ongoing, or is it, you get one shot?
So, so generally, it's, it's, it's fairly defined, so the survey company won't just necessarily push it out and anybody can respond to it, because they want it to be scientifically, statistically, statistically significant? What are they talking about? Sorry about that. So they'll, they'll have some control over it, make sure they have a decent distribution throughout, throughout the city. So, no, we won't just have this link to say, hey, everybody, go ahead and respond to it. It'll, it'll be controlled a bit.
Okay.
Further comments on this?
All right. Here's one where I think we already have a bunch of data and we need to be using it more. And by the way, I appreciate these as examples. I'm sure we have more than three for quality of life. I can think of more off the cuff. On the tree canopy, we already set, I remember Ms. Naraka presenting about one of our goals for either, it was a sustainability goal, which is to increase the tree canopy 20%. So we already have a number, we already know, we already had an inventory of trees. I love the Centennial Tree Legacy Program, it's something that Mr. Brown has talked about, it's something I think is a good idea, we'll be rolling out more things. We've talked about it, too, but, so it's not just the number of trees planted, it's, it's canopy growth generally. Citizen survey, I think that's good. I think it may also provide us other opportunities to determine where to go in the future year, and maybe you don't set a particular benchmark, because this is year one, that goes back to the police issue, too, because I don't know what the appropriate benchmark is. If you look to other cities, maybe they see what they have done, too. You know, we did that with our employment, I'm not sure whether we did that with our employment engagement survey, because I'd asked, you know, how do we set the benchmarks? And I don't know if we went out to other cities to go look at what, what we thought was good. But we should be, you know, measuring us, we're not the only, we're not the only ones out there. Finally, on city-sponsored events and participants, all good points raised about who you get. I think we've been doing a good job of this. We have tweaked and tailored events, knowing that we weren't necessarily getting attendance, or the attendance had shifted. For example, our Fourth of July events are shifting, partly because we were seeing fewer and fewer Boca residents. We, people were voting with their feet, for example, on things like the boat parade. We have tweaked our Memorial Day and Fourth of July and Labor, not Labor Day, Veterans Day events appropriately, and we've seen just, you know, we can, we're all there, so we can count the heads, too. I think there's some data there. I think we also can do a better job of tracking our social media and our outbound email communications through Constant Contact or whatever service provider we use. In response to Ms. Delvecchio's question during strategic planning in May, I mentioned this. I don't know yet if economic development is, you know, tracking what, what, what newsletters are hitting, what articles within each newsletter are hitting. I know we're all able to do that. I'm sure our staff's able to do that with our monthly newsletter, and perhaps our Meisner newsletters and other things like that. That might also give you an indication of, hey, what are people clicking on is another indication of interest. Is it necessarily a benchmark that you say, well, you know, we went up 5% on people clicking on this type of thing? I, I don't know if you measure that alone as a demonstrable result, but it may indicate more things of where you're going. So I think it's more than just the person with the clicker who walked in at Meisner Park. And again, we've had that data for a number of years. And quality of life is the most ephemeral of all of these things. I think the survey will yield fruit, but it's also another thing on city-sponsored events, it's also impact on the business community. Some of our events were not deemed successful, because they had negative impacts on local businesses. So we might have an opportunity to engage with those people as well. And again, on Meisner Park, we used to get a number of complaints that relating to the valet operation, which was not the city's responsibility, on nights where we'd do events at Meisner Park, and some tables had to cancel a lot of reservations accordingly. So it goes both ways.
Further thoughts? All right.
To answer one question on that benchmarking data, so the survey company that we're going to use, they have a, they have a cache of data, so they have been doing this for a while, so we'll be able to compare ourselves to other cities pretty readily. So we'll, we'll have an understanding of what their benchmarks are. You know, we could compare to cities in Florida, we can compare to cities nationwide, so we'll, we'll have a little bit of that data, Mayor, so you'll, you'll be able to see how we kind of compare relative to everybody else.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Um, next set of data is related to financially sound. So couple, couple of, uh, metrics to think about here. Uh, one is, um, trying to measure the long, long-term sustainability of the organization and, uh, making a comparison of revenue versus expenditures. And what, what we wanted to track for you was looking at our reoccurring revenue, uh, relative to our reoccurring expenditures and making sure that revenue meets or exceeds those expenditures. So, so that would be, um, revenue that we see on a regular basis relative to those reoccurring expenses, factoring out things like capital projects or maybe one-time initiatives that are unique or special. Um, so that gives us a, a pretty good idea as to where we're going to sit from a long-term financial perspective. Um, you'll see that when you're developing your annual financial plan, but also what's more telling is what, what you see in the audited, audited statements. So, a little bit of a lag measure, uh, but something that will give you a little bit of an idea where we are from a long-term financial sustainability perspective. Um, second measure we're suggesting is a fund balance as a percentage of the prior year's, uh, operating budget. So, uh, kind of the standard benchmark is 25 to 30%. Um, you know, we don't want it to go too high. You don't want to sit on too much cash, but you want to have enough cash to show some ability to be flexible and, uh, to address needs as they, uh, come up on a regular basis. Um, and then lastly, bond rating. So making sure that that bond rating is high is important. As you know, that it's a pretty rigorous process when they go through and they evaluate our financial condition and the management structure of the organization, see how we're functioning. Um, so that, so that in and of itself is a pretty telling, um, uh, metric to see how we're functioning as an organization from a financial perspective. So, so those three things give a, a, a nice overview of, uh, our sustainability and how we're functioning. So any, any thoughts on those three?
Unlike the last goal, I think this one's eas, more easily quantifiable, less ephemeral. And I think these are good. I mean, I, AAA bond rating, I think we would like to have that as a baseline minimum. Of course we keep that. I mean, the, the city, as long as I've been paying attention, always has and I don't think it's going to change. Um, but I, again, I think these are good. I think these are good, starting particularly the first one, because that may be slightly different than the kinds of assessment we get each year on when it comes to budget time. So I like these. I'm not sure what else we can do, but keeping a AAA bond rating, I think is an absolute given, given our role and how strong our city's finances are. A question for you, Mr. Lukasik. What has been our fund balance as a percentage of fiscal operating budget for '25 and for completed '24?
I think it's, uh, Mr. Reserve has just popped out. Um, I think it's been slightly higher, but, but a little bit above 30, but I'm, I'm not a hundred percent certain.
Okay. All right. Further questions? Then I'll just continue. Again, I would say look to what, in this regard, we don't look to what other cities do historically because we've been the best in class. Uh, AAA bond rating that we enjoy is higher than the rating of the United States of America. I think that's a good thing. It's not entirely within our control that the bond agencies change their ratings, but I know we've pivoted constantly to meet up, meet, to stay current with their changing requirements. Uh, 25 or 30%, I think we should pick a number, not a range. Um, and if we've been consistently higher, then go above it. And then on sustainability, we've, we've long budgeted this way. Um, there have been times where we have projected shortfalls and we have to accordingly, you know, figure that out. But one other thing, and it came up during the budget season, which is we've, we often project to be net negative for the year and almost every year, or at least in recent memory, end up positive. So maybe it means that our projections are not, um, they're a little too negative. Um, I'd rather be more negative and have a windfall than be too Pollyanna-ish and have a deficit, but trying to better align those. So maybe it's also benchmarking where we expected we thought we went up and where we're earning up as a percentage year to year. Maybe it helps us tighten those things. And thank you to my colleagues who agreed to lower our mileage rate accordingly because we had positions we knew we did not need. So as time goes on, maybe we tighten those up. I think that would be a good benchmark to know now, um, what has been the percentage net every year as a total relation, in proportion of the total budget where we've ended up more positive than projected. Further comments? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on, world-class services. A couple items for you. Um, the percentage of CIP projects scheduled, um, complete on time and on budget. Um, you know, we, we move a lot of CIP projects out into the, you know, from year to year. So we want to be, we want to be able to identify, uh, the resources that we need to implement projects on time, uh, and not move so many projects into future years. Um, so getting those done on time and on budget will be important. Um, our response to see click fix, um, obviously we want to be able to respond as quickly as we can to some of those. Now, some of those are a little more difficult to resolve. Uh, so some of them are simple as a pothole or removing a dead animal. Uh, some of them are far more involved. So, um, so as long as we're responding, that's probably the easiest way to be able to, um, take a look at and see click fix. And then, uh, again, using the citizen perception survey, um, the, the percentage of residents indicating that customer service is provided by the city is either good or excellent. Um, you know, we'll be able to get some good, uh, benchmark data from that, uh, survey tool to be able to see how we're doing. And again, just from my own experience, I know that, again, these survey companies, they collect a lot of that data. So we'll be able to see how we're comparing from a customer service perspective relative to other communities, whether it be across the country or just in Florida or even Palm Beach County. So we'll be able to narrow down that data. Uh, how do those look to you? Anything that we're missing or anything we're not missing, hitting the mark here?
I think these are also likewise very good. I like the idea of the see click fix data. Um, and I recognize that many of the issues that get posted on there, they get reported on there, including the ones that I report, are not within our control to complete. Sometimes we're talking about roadways that we don't operate or maintain, or we're talking about streetlight issues that FPL handles. So that's not something we can control necessarily. But I like the idea of having folks told that we're, we have passed this on to whatever agency is dealing with it and then they can follow up necessarily if they want to after that. Uh, one suggestion I would make would be, uh, the mayor over time has been quick to point out justifiably that we have increased the speed with which we address permitting issues. That may be, that's a world-class service that we might be able to look at and point to in terms of how swiftly we are getting these things out and in the hands of homeowners, residents who are seeking them. That may be something that we can both get good data on now and also improve upon over time, which I know has been our goal for many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wiger.
Thank you. Uh, that's a great point, Mr. Thompson. Yeah, in terms of, um, how fast or just the permitting process. I mean, uh, I'm, I'm sure my colleagues have, um, have been approached by various citizens or businesses at one time or another. Um, I know Mr. Brown and Mr. Lukasik, we've talked about it. You know, there's 13,000 permits that are in process right now. 99% of them are residential. Um, so, uh, most of them, all right, are, are people's houses, are people's getting, um, renovated or, you know, not a lot of commercial. Um, just in that regard, um, when, when we're doing a citizen perception survey, does that also include a business perception survey? Um, is it just go to citizens or does it go to, you know, BTRs, you know, the BTR holder? Um, if we have 13,000 business tax receipts, you know, I think it could be very helpful to hear their perception survey, not for the ones that are very kind of residentially oriented, but certainly, uh, as of what we're talking about in terms of the, you know, the best business atmosphere, um, how fast are they getting their BTRs? How fast are they getting the permits? How fast are they, you know, getting that responsiveness and specifically at different stages of the process? Because I know we've all encountered roadblocks or heard of roadblocks at every stage of the process. So if there's some way to analyze how the business, businesses are perceiving it, um, I don't know if that goes here in another, there's another section for businesses, but certainly crossing, you know, if there's one opportunity to have citizens and business perception survey, um, because I'm, I'm sure it would be very helpful to, to see if they feel the same way.
Yeah. So the, the citizen perception survey that we're getting ready to implement won't include the business community and it will, it will be based on households. Uh, but that's not to say that, uh, we couldn't use a, that company or a similar company to be able to do the same thing. So, um, so not, not impossible to do that, just wouldn't fit under this, uh, this particular scenario.
Further comments?
I like, I like that idea. Mr. Wiger, since focus, the best place to do business. Be nice to have a business perception survey as well.
Further comments? I'll make a few. Let me just step back here because Mr. Thompson gave another example of one of the many metrics we've been using for years. So I understand that this list is not intended to be exhaustive and we could probably have 10 or 12 metrics other than the three selected. So I don't want to get too bogged down, even though I already have and I reserve the right to make further comments. Uh, the, the bigger picture is, and it goes back to what you said about aligning departments. I think you said aligning departments and employees with the strategic goals and objectives. I think that's already there. I trust it's already there because it certainly should be. We have the goal since May. So everyone should be already clear and aligned. It's more about making sure that attitude of how do we measure, how do, how are we implementing this every single day and well, how are we measuring it gets through. So it's more than just the individual 18 metrics on these slides. It's that culture of measurement, accountability and transparency. And whatever more we need to do across the board to get that there is maybe the most important thing of everything on these slides. Now, back to some specifics. Um, it, yeah, I mean, completing time on budget, it's something we're already doing and that's good. And, but you know, it's also understanding if year to year something dips, what happened? We had a, we had an, you know, an unusual incident concerning a roadway last week that, you know, you have to factor that into. See click fix, it's not just a percentage of submissions that are responded to within two days, which candidly I think should be a hundred percent. Um, at least the response should be within two days, if not one day, because you can just say, we've, we've received this and we're reviewing it. That shouldn't take hard, but it's also, are more people using see click fix? Is this becoming the dominant medium for which people communicate concerns? Uh, for the phone calls that come into, um, City Hall or to the sanitation line after hours, are those promptly responded to? Uh, I know that I, I encountered an issue, uh, trying to reach someone from sanitation and didn't get a call back. Um, we do this with all these other metrics. So how are we, how are we charting everything? Um, and, and also are the number of complaints increasing, decreasing? I mean, those are just some other things to throw out there. Um, and then finally, good or excellent service? Yeah. And maybe it's more than just a perception survey. It's individual, um, departments or tasks responding. Some people have expressed concerns about our beach permitting system, our dog permitting system. I know we're working on that. We are not cutting edge. We should be. Um, we're lagging actually. And what we can do to quickly change that around and make that seamless and more streamlined for residents is, is another metric in and of itself. And at the end of the year, even if not everything is quantitative, if we have qualitative improvements, then you list the qualitative improvement, qualitative improvements. Further thoughts?
All right. Thank you. Please go.
Welcome. Okay. Robert Economy. So a couple of metrics here. Um, just quickly, uh, trying to measure new businesses, business retention and new jobs introduced to the community. Um, and again, you know, we're, we're sort of looking at, um, metrics that'll span probably over a couple of years, you know, just so we smooth out, you know, blips in data, you know, whether it's a, a, a peak or a valley in terms of the number. Um, so in terms of new businesses, obviously we have engagement with, um, some, some of our economic development partners. So we'll have some data from them as well as from the business tax receipts. And, and again, on the business tax receipts, well, we're, we're moving in a direction where we're, we're trying to keep it as simple as possible and not ask for things that we don't need. Um, some of this data might be good for us to have as we're starting to try to figure out, okay, well, what, what direction are we going in and what are we accomplishing, uh, with a lot of our economic development efforts? So, so we, we might as a matter of course through the business tax receiving process, add a couple, uh, fields to collect some data, um, to see what kind of, what kind of information we get back. So the business retention piece, I think, would be really important. And Councilmember Wiger, you had asked about it, you know, a little while ago, uh, which I thought was a really good suggestion, taking a look at that business retention data. Um, and then new jobs, we're not necessarily collecting that data. And it might be available in some other places like Career Source, uh, but if we can get that data directly, that would be, that would be helpful. Now, when people are renewing their BTRs, that might be a little more difficult for us to collect that data because they're, uh, it's a little faster and they don't have to fill out as much data. Uh, so we have to evaluate what steps we might have to take to be able to, uh, get the mechanism in place to be able to actually ask businesses for this information. So we're, we're working on that right now, if these are, uh, metrics that you think are valuable for us going forward.
Uh, let me just ask a question on that, Mr. Lukasik. Uh, for eight years or so, we've had access to the Department of Economic Opportunities quarterly, uh, reemployment tax filings. What use have we been making of that data?
That's a good, that's a great question. I wish I could give you a good answer and I should have that answer, but I don't. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll dig into that one and figure out where we are with that.
We, I haven't discussed this directly with Ms. Del Vecchio, but we, you know, when this was started, the idea was to go track month, quarterly rise and falls among employers to see who, who had added jobs and then reach out to them and who had lost jobs and reach out to them. Um, so that, frankly, that data is a lot more robust than, uh, the business tax receipts because it does give number of employees. We had to enter into certain, certain confidentially added confidentiality provisions with DEO in order to get it. So the access is limited, but I, I, I know they had it, so you should too. Um, I think that would be a much better place to start, um, in addition to BTRs and very robust.
Yeah, thank you for that.
All right. Mr. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor Singer. Thank you. Um, my question is, are we tracking, so like we're going to, like many ribbon cuttings for many different things, restaurants, Wells Fargo, whatever it is. Um, is economic development tracking like how many businesses are opening, whether they're small, larger scale? And when those businesses open, so when we went to Crema, I always ask, and I learned this from the mayor, how many employees are you employing here? It's important for me to know that because I wanted to understand. And the same thing with H&amp;H Bagels, like what is the job structure here? So, I mean, are we able to track that? I think that's an incredible thing to track on all new business that's opening, whether small, large, medium. Um, just to see, that, that right there will give you at least like the baseline of like, okay, we opened, you know, 10 businesses this month and those 10 businesses added, et cetera. So we know that 60 jobs were added to Wells Fargo and maybe Crema did a 15 and I don't remember H&amp;H right now, but that's already like 70 or 80 jobs in one and a half weeks. So I think we should do a better job of tracking that. Another thing is I had, I, I had the opportunity to present on a panel and I worked with Mr. Brown, um, last week for Bright Line and I didn't have a lot of data. And I know Bright Line is a private company and their ridership numbers and things like that, but there has to be a way, a way for us to understand what those numbers are and that they're easily tracked without having myself go to Bright Line and, and get that data. So I got the Boca Connect data, which was great to have, and I used it as part of my, um, presentation. And that the panel was like, what has the Bright Line, and what does the impact on Bright Line on your city? Um, not only business, but also culturally, et cetera. And I had a heart, I mean, I know a lot of the data because I, I, we talk about it, but I didn't have a lot of quantitative data. Um, and I think that we're missing the mark. We want to know how many people are coming into the station? How many people are leaving the station? Can tell you, Ms. Nakas and I were on the train last Friday or Thursday, Thursday, Friday. The trains were busy when we're coming in and out. It would be great for us to have that, that, that information. That'll make even a better case for our potential second platform. Also, Tri-Rail numbers, like what are the numbers are that people are coming? We know that our station is the number one used station. We should have that data available. It's there. They, they're tracking it. Those entities are tracking it. We should have it so that when we are doing presentations or we're out there having these discussions, we can really say, well, here's what, what's happening. So I think there's multiple ways of gathering that, not only for new business, but also, um, for former businesses that are already in town. So.
Thank you. Um, all great suggestions. Uh, as, as an attorney, um, over the many years, I've had to help companies incorporate or get their tax ID numbers, their EIN number. Um, and as, as part of the application process to simply get a tax ID number, um, the IRS asks a series of very general questions, but some of them about business formation, what, obviously what type of business it is, et cetera, similar to our business tax receipt, but also how many employees do you anticipate having over the many employees do you anticipate having over the next 12 months, things like that? So, you know, we want our business tax receipt system to be simple, of course, and efficient, but it could be also a way to capture some data, some onboarding data of what those are going to look like, what those businesses are and how many people they're going to employ. Along the same lines, you know, there is, and again, it's very difficult, but in a corporate setting, sometimes there's exit interviews. And it's not just businesses in terms of the retention effort, it's not just the retention rate, but the exit rate. And if a business relocated out of here, certainly, I'd like to know why. You know, was it something that the city could have done better? You know, was it a city-specific thing or was it just business? You know, the reason for it. So sometimes an exit interview, again, very low response rate on those types of things, but, you know, but obviously, if we can reach out, it's another opportunity to capture data. And lastly, something that we've talked about and along the same lines is what Deputy Mayor Drucker is saying, in terms of, my understanding is that the daily, the number of people in the city during Business Day exceeds the number of residents, right? There's 140,000 people that come here to work. And how many people live here and work here? How many people are commuting here? And of those businesses, I know we've all heard this, that, you know, the businesses want to move here, but they're also concerned about where their employees are going to live regionally, locally. So it's part of our policy too. So if there was some way of capturing, you know, metrics of how many residence businesses employ, or, you know, like Ms. Drucker says, commuting habits, things like that, there may be ways to capture, you know, the package, meaning that, you know, it's not just efficient to do business here, it's also a great way and a great place to attract talent, retain talent, because some of them can live close by. So again, just that kind of global aspect of where are the employees coming from, not just the businesses as well. Thank you.
Mr. Lucasic?
Okay, very good. So transportation and mobility. So a couple of things here. One, in terms of the metrics, and then there's some interesting data sources that we can use to capture data that I want to talk about a little bit. And then there are conflicting goals that we might want to discuss real quick. So the first measure that we were starting to talk about, given the direction that we're heading in in terms of development and what we want to see with transportation, is looking at the miles traveled via auto compared to other modes of transportation. So maybe the metric is the percentage of miles traveled by auto compared to other modes. You know, now not an easy bit of data to try to collect. However, you know, there are companies out there that are aggregating data from mobile devices now. So I just happened to talk to one of them and it was more focused in along the lines of economic development. But Vice Mayor Drucker, we were actually talking about the question you had about, I asked them about the question you had about Brightline. So they were able to hone in on Brightline, figure out how many people are going there, where they're going, where are they going most frequently, how long they're staying there. So there is that type of data that's out there. Now, admittedly, it's a little big brother-ish, but the data is there, it's being collected. And, you know, there are companies that we could work with to be able to understand, you know, what are those patterns and what does that look like? And how are people using the resources that we have? And then what are they doing once they get here? So those opportunities are available for us if we want to look at those. Now, it's a question of, you know, do we start partnering and contracting with companies that actually start aggregating that data? Because that can be a little controversial at times. So something to think about as we're kind of going through these things. The second measure that we were looking at was related to transit ridership. We already know we have Boca Connect and now we have, or we've had the Park at Broken Sound shuttle. So any, those and any other ride systems that we put in place, we should be taking a look at. The number of systematic safety and quick build projects are things that we should probably be looking at. And then the last thing, which I think is somewhat important, people think about it, but it conflicts a little bit with some of our other goals as it relates to safety, is that average level of service at key intersections. Obviously, if we're moving cars through intersections, that sometimes can sacrifice the safety parameters for bicyclists and pedestrians. So it's a commonly used measure, obviously, and we're starting to think about ease of transportation throughout a community, but it conflicts generally with a lot of our focus on pedestrians and bicyclists right now. So anyway, I offered it up as, hey, by the way, there's this measure out there. I don't know if it's something that we want to use or not, but I offer it up for discussion purposes, I think.
May I jump in on that one?
Of course.
I don't think the conflict is necessarily as inherent as you suggest because you have intersection delays just from the normal grid. Then you also have intersection delays because someone hit the pedestrian crosswalk or, you know, otherwise. Those are very different. You don't have to, I think LOS is still a very valuable measurement, but if you can layer on that second set of data somehow, through our cameras, through indications of the push buttons, that will, we do that anyway when we're affecting timing. We know, you know, we've adjusted traffic signals based on pedestrian demand. So you contextualize it there, but still seeing LOS is important because it also speaks to, for example, what we're now seeing on Clintmore Road, that the county's development on Lyons west of the city is impacting Clintmore Road and that's not something we can control. But it's helpful to know that because we might have to go back to the county at some point and say, "What you going to do?" So my thoughts there. Mr. Thompson, you went first.
I agree. It has to stay as part of our, as one of the metrics we're going to use. And I think I agree that I'm not sure I see it as necessarily like an absolute conflict with safety and Vision Zero. I think it does speak to ways that we can improve if we have the data that we're collecting on that. I think that it should stay. Another point I wanted to make too is, relates to school zones. And I'm wondering if there's a way, and I'm sure a lot of us anecdotally have observed the fact that we have a lot of school zones in our city that don't necessarily get the kinds of compliance by drivers. And so if there's a way that we can build in the degree to which school zone, I don't want to, far be it for me to suggest that we keep track of tickets for that kind of thing, but, or use that as a metric, because the incentive structure would get all messed up. But I would like to know that we have safety built into our school zones and that, there's got to be a way that we can add a metric related to that. I'm not sure how, but I give it to the, I raised the idea and the idea that I imagine if my colleagues agree that that makes sense to build into a metric in some way. And I leave it to the staff, our capable staff, to determine how best to do that.
Ms. Drucker.
Thank you, Mayor Singer. So in terms of the, we were saying, the first bullet here on the miles traveled via auto and the mobile device data that you receive, so we know when you purchase a ticket on Tri-Rail, they already ask you for your zip code. So that's part of that process. So I'm sure that we could get that data. We would be able to know on that station, every time I go, like, what is your zip? That's part of the process. You have to put your zip code. So I'm assuming we could get, that's how they probably know that our station's the highest used for certain areas, for incoming. So I think that, I agree, we have to be careful in terms of how much we want to monitor, but I think that the monitoring that we're doing is not so much like personal data, it's just like trips taken. Like if you're, if most of our folks are going to Orlando, I mean, I think we want to know that. And I think if most of our people are leaving, you know, to go to like, I don't know, I'm just going to say Aventura, like, I would like to also like know that. I think that's important data on ridership so that we could understand how we're going to make it better in terms of moving people around. Transit ridership in the TOC areas, Boca Connect, I just got some numbers on that, you know, in preparation for that panel. And about last year, before Mr. Brown took over, I had had conversations with the prior city manager where I had kind of requested the contract because it had been brought to our attention that the shuttle services were not being used in that area and that's a missed mark. However, we had entered a five-year contract that I didn't know if the provisions, you know, we kind of discussed it and then we kind of left it at that, because maybe that's something we need to look at. Maybe there is a contract provision that we're breaking the contract early, but if we're paying for a service which is almost in the millions of dollars and they're not being utilized, then maybe we should look at that contract and renegotiate that contract or enter into another facility. Maybe that will be our next Boca Connect. But I think that in this process, that's something that if the council agrees, that we should look at the contract, what does it cost to break that contract and what is a ridership? I can tell you, when I pulled that data last year, towards the end of the year, it is not being utilized. So that is not good, you know, use of our taxpayer dollars. And I think that if we look at that, maybe it's a conversation for this council to look at that contract. I think that has to happen before you can start tracking, because when you track that ridership data, you're going to see you're not getting a good ROI in terms of the Park at Broken Sound. And then in terms of the traffic, I agree with Mr. Thompson and the mayor, we still have to have that metric in there because, you're right, we accommodate a lot of our crosswalks, sometimes the timing. We know that the DDI caused a lot of, you know, agit, and we know it gets backed up in the morning and we're always looking at that kind of traffic flow. So, and because if they, because people cross that big glades intersection and you see them on their bikes, that delays that area, but I still think we should be tracking it because it's kind of, it all goes hand in hand. Like you said, it was contradictory, but it does go hand in hand. We're going to have cars on the road and people, is how do we get them together to the safest place? But we know that we're not going to do away with cars. Our job is going to be, how are we going to make these two fit together by providing other multimodal alternatives?
Mr. Wigder.
Thank you. All great points. I think just, you know, one kind of differential there is that we do have a downtown that has a different density and as we always strive for, a different walkability component as opposed to, let's say, our western communities or our northern sector, which might be more, let's call it suburban, traditional suburban vehicular dominated. The downtown by design, we've strived to have it be more pedestrian, mobile, walking-oriented. So in terms of the conflict that you kind of discussed, Mr. Lucasic, I don't disagree. It's kind of just on the slide rule, where are you, you know, where are you moving that? And I think in the downtown where we want and where we are, you know, incentivizing people to walk and do those walkable type of things, there, you know, there might be more appropriate to, you know, to have a little bit of a longer crosswalk time or et cetera, even though the streets are supposed to be narrow, right? So maybe that'll still come out the same. But I think depending on where it is, is going to be, is going to be critical because, like I said, as we start to develop, and it's funny that you brought up, Ms. Drucker, the transit in the Park at Broken Sound, because now with the Live Local Act and our initiation to try to densify that, you know, we have the services there before the density and that was, that's one of the issues. So hopefully, whether it's, you know, a movement towards Boca Connect doing more different, you know, different spots, but the point is, as those communities start to become more mixed use and develop, then obviously, the, you know, the hypothesis is that it should, right, the ridership should be increasing. And right now, we just got a little, I guess we were early to the game there, so to speak, because, you know, the PM, now with the Live Local designation, you know, it's going to take several years for that to happen. So I think there's a couple, you know, great points there, but certainly the downtown is, might be a little, treated a little differently.
Ms. Nakus.
Thank you, Mayor Singer. The one word that I wanted to point out on here was connectivity. And I read recently how one city was using as a benchmark the number of miles of improving connectivity yearly that that city was committing to. And I thought that that was a really nice benchmark, whether it's a half a mile or two miles or something like that, we're always saying we need to connect the trails, we need to provide better connectivity. So I think committing to something like that and using that as a benchmark would be a really great step towards improving our connectivity in the city.
Further comments?
Got it. All right, thank you. Okay. Last focus area, last set of suggested KPIs, so growth management. And this first measure may be a little bit duplicative. So it's looking at the increase in pedestrian and bicycle traffic in certain locations throughout the community. So this is really built on, Councilmember Wigder, I'll give you credit, the 15-minute city concept, so that's the idea behind this particular measure. A little bit duplicative to one of the other ones under transportation, but thought was still important, given, you know, the idea behind the, some of the development that we're thinking about. Affordable housing units, you know, the number of units that are developed within the city. And then lastly, the amount of dedicated pedestrian bicycle facilities within the city. So Councilmember Nakus, a little similar to what you were hinting at, you know, the number of linear feet of new and improved pedestrian or bicycle facility. So whether it's connectivity or, I would even say, you know, just an increased level of service, so maybe it's a four-foot sidewalk and we expand it to six because it's needed for the pedestrian or bicycle movement, or it's planting trees to create shade to make it more usable. Whatever that is, just making sure that we're taking a look at what we're improving along the system so that it's enhanced for people to use it better.
Mr. Wigder.
Yeah, thank you. Along the similar lines, you know, from one of the previous, one of the previous slides, I think it would be helpful to find out the time period. When we look at the number of affordable housing units approved and built, or just units in general or developments in general, the time from application to approval, the time from application to occupancy. Because as we know, sometimes the application process, just getting the units approved can be a significant, a significant process. So if we can get those units created more, right, so it's not just affordable housing units, it's kind of, we need them now. And so the question is the timeliness of how fast we can get those through the system, somehow measuring that, I think would be helpful. Thank you.
Further comments?
I think that's it for this slide. Was there anything further?
That was it?
All right, thank you. Anyone else want to add anything? I'll add just one last thing. I think, thank you for this. This is, as we said, or as I said, we probably got a little more granular than we needed to on these 18 or 19 chosen ones, and there are scores and scores of metrics we're using. And ones that we tout all the time, our tax rate compared to other cities that were 60% lower than Miami, that the lowest tax rate of any full-service city. Number of corporate headquarters in our city compared to other places, we far outpace those. I think those are important metrics to keep in mind, just, you know, other things. The customs facility that we approved, was that a quality of life issue? Yeah, but the metrics for customs at the airport was significant. Plan mobility, we talked about the number of miles reduced, and even though we don't have exact numbers on it, anecdotally, we know it. Permitting time, I think it's, you know, it's not just how fast permits are, but the number of time we're reducing permitting overall, how fast construction projects can get completed. And while you structured this in terms of, you know, our different goals, just bear in mind that I know all of our departments have their own internal metrics too. So even if they don't fit neatly into one of the six or seven organizing bundles, they're there. So we probably have, you know, hundreds of metrics that I think we should be looking at. So it's about, you know, as you said, going back to what's the most important ones, and I'll just end with an anecdote. In World War I, during World War I, the British government shifted from cloth caps to helmets in an effort to reduce head injuries. And they found out that the number of head injuries increased dramatically. They weren't concerned though, because the number of deaths decreased far greater. So what had been deaths just became head injuries. And so they were happier that people were having a head injury instead of a death. So it's important to know that, like, when you solve a metric, what's the overall context? And so it's important to put all these things in context as well. Final thoughts?
May I make one suggestion? And this is, may sound uneducated, it likely is. One of the things that sets apart Boca and kind of is wrapped into a lot of these priorities of ours is our tax base. Our tax base, significant as it is, is a reflection of the quality of life we have here, of our vibrant economy, of how we're financially sound. It allows us to have such a low tax rate, or low, yeah, tax rate, yeah. So, but our tax base is a function of many things. Good, I think, local government being chief among them, good planning, going back decades. But also, it's, you know, we are larger than other cities, and that could explain it. But have we ever analyzed what our tax base is, like, per square mile, to kind of counteract the fact that the size of the city, while we're larger, say, than our neighbor to the north, we have a substantially larger tax base? I'm wondering if we can use that as kind of like a global metric, because it does kind of creep into all of these things. And let's keep track of that. The fact that our property in our city is worth so much more than other cities nearby, relative to size, and taking into account size, should be used, and I think can be something that we could track over time, because our square footage, square mileage tends to stay the same unless we annex. But could we add that as one of the metrics that we can take a look at? If it hasn't been assessed in that way previously?
I'm seeing nods of yes. And I think that's a simple calculation. So thank you. Further comments? All right. Mr. Brown, still your report?
Thank you. Very briefly, Council, Friday, I believe, I sent you all proposed ordinance for amendment to the agenda tomorrow night. I'm going to bring that up tomorrow night to please amend the agenda. And I wanted to inform you and the public that we are closely monitoring the storm. We're monitoring what actions may need to be taken in the next few days, and we will keep everybody informed. Please stay tuned to social media, our text alerts, et cetera, and we'll keep everybody informed.
Thank you. And we, I believe, we sent out some alerts today. We also have activated the Citizen Information Center?
The CIC is active from eight to five during regular business hours, in case people have questions about where to find out something. Sandbags, for example, we had a couple of inquiries today. And the CIC telephone number is 561-982-4900.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much.
That's it for my report.
Thank you very much. City Attorney reports?
I have no report, thank you.
Thank you. We'll start on my left with Ms. Knackles. We'll go that way this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions, follow-ups. Are we getting a Boca Connect update? Because I thought it was going to be done in September, but it's...
I think that it's likely to be at the first meeting in November now, based upon what we've got coming up on agendas.
Okay. Hopefully, the numbers will be up a little bit more as the season's now started.
Getting closer into season, maybe a little bit.
Okay. Secondly, I have a question, about something that was brought up today. A week ago, you had sent an email to Mr. Danberg, and we all got it. And I'm just wondering, since then, it's been a week, has there been a finalized agreement yet?
No, we have not heard back from the Danberg side, but we are finalizing an agreement on our side. It should be ready probably by the end of this week.
Okay. And do we know the answer to that question about the 15 months versus the 27 months? Is it 15 months to get a permit, 12 months to build? So is it 27 months?
It's 12 months to obtain a site plan amendment if it is necessary, and then 15 months to build once they commence. So it's 12 plus 15, not 15 plus 12.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. I was just going by the email and the two different options, so.
Right. And just a little bit of further clarification on the question that was asked today. The fact that a stipulated order is entered into does not mean that the property is in compliance. The property will not be in compliance until the new, the second part of the project is built.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Brown. That's all I have.
Mr. Thompson? No report. Mr. Reeder?
Thank you, no, just very briefly. Thank you, Mr. Brown and Mayor Singer, for making sure that all the people are alert out there, and Ms. Knackles as well, and your report. Yes, the My Boca app is a very great place to get a source of information, and you could sign up for the alerts right there or on the internet. So please, please stay safe, everyone. Just this weekend, you know, we had a significant amount of rain, and it looks like there's more to come. So, and we talked about the one partial bridge collapse in the south of the city. So please, just be careful, be careful out there. Stay away from the large puddles and whatnot. If you can't see the bottom, don't drive through it, because I just saw, even yesterday with the amount of rain, I saw some people driving through some significant water. And there's, you know, right now, the ground is very, very saturated. So please be careful out there. And then likewise, also, being at the one-year anniversary of October 7th, thank you all, colleagues, for your really heartfelt comments through this difficult and challenging year, especially for the people in Israel, especially the fact that there's still 100 hostages there, including Americans. They, they're still within our thoughts, of course, and we just, we pray for peace. We pray for peace and the return of the hostages that are there one year later. It's very sad to me, that, very depressing, that we have to, you know, even talk like this, that there are hostages there, including Americans, a year later. So I appreciate all the heartfelt sentiments today. And I know there's a lot of events throughout the city tonight that I'm sure many of us will be participating in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Drucker.
So I'm going to start, so I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Brown and Ms. Knackles, who've all been appointed alongside myself, to legislative policy committees. We just came back from a one and a half, or one-day conference, Ms. Knackles and I. I'm back on the intergovernmental relations, mobility and emergency management. It used to be the transportation and mobility, and they kind of took the housing piece out of it, and they added intergovernmental relations. The mobility piece is still in there, and of course, emergency management, which is what the whole state has been doing for the last couple, couple of weeks. So I wanted just to give a couple of updates. As we get ready, we took the Brightline up. Again, great way to get up there and get, and take care of business. In terms of the meeting that I attended with the intergovernmental relations, there was a whole piece on annexation, and we're not annexation here in Boca Raton, we're not doing anything like that, but there is a movement from Tallahassee where smaller cities are trying to be dissolved and put into bigger buckets to bring in development. So there's all these lawsuits. It was really a fascinating conversation, and I believe these meetings are going to be, were recorded because of the storm. But I thought it was very interesting, and the reason I'm saying that to us is because we're financially sound. And what was happening with some of these cities is that some of them are not, and that is why they're trying to be dissolved. So very eye-opening conversation. In terms of mobility, we were talking, again, about the gas tax and the reduction of gas tax as more and more people go, you know, go hybrid or go to electrical cars. There was a big conversation about EV chargers as well, and I went ahead and put in my two cents, and I said how proactive we have been with our development community, that we don't want to look at projects if they're not EV-ready, or at least EV-ready to connect. So a lot of the cities were, you know, were reaching out to me, asking how we were doing that, because of course, we know we're not preemptive from EV changes. And we also got to hear from FDOT for the 2055 plan that's out there. They're still taking feedback. Our, our feedback for the electeds was canceled because of the storm last week, and they haven't been rescheduled. But it was really good to hear how FDOT is really aligned with a lot of the things that we're aligned in our strategic priorities. They're talking about, you know, air travel, trains, bike, pedestrian. So everyone from the top down now is kind of on that same path. So that was really good to hear, and the plan is out there. And then, of course, we had a whole segment on emergency management and obviously storm, the flood zones, which we had already, here in Boca, we had already had a presentation. They came in and they kind of explained all the new coding, et cetera, et cetera. So our next meeting is in November. We're going to start preparing, in my particular committee, what our legislative policy is going to be, and at some point, I'll have to bring it back to the council, so we all have agreement before I take the vote in Orlando. So just kind of wanted to give a little update on that. Also, it's Go Pink Awareness Month. Last week, the hospital went pink for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I know that we do things in the city for our employees, but for everybody out there, early detection, the earlier you detect breast cancer, the earlier chances that you'll be a survivor. Lastly, I know maybe the mayor's going to speak about it, but I had the opportunity to go to H and H Bay, it was last week, with my son. He approves another addition, and we always talk about everything going on downtown, but at least this is kind of in the midtown area. And then lastly, to Ms. Knackles spoke, Mayor Singer spoke, and Mr. Wigder. Today is October 7th, and earlier today, I had the opportunity of listening to former Israeli Ambassador Mike Orin. He had a whole presentation today in Palm Beach, and it was really interesting to hear his perspective of not only this war, but the war on Israel, and this man served and was also part of, you know, our government. But what left me mostly, kind of, the end of the speech was that two of his children actually live in Israel, and this morning rockets were launched into Israel again. And he put up the pictures of all the little grandchildren still in the bomb shelters today. So very, very sad that we're going through that. So we pray for Israel, we pray for peace, and that's my report.
Thank you very much, and thank you, congratulations, and thank you as well, Ms. Drucker, in addition, Mr. Brown, and Ms. Knackles, for your service on those state committees. I've done a number of yours. I'm temporarily paroled, but I appreciate your, your service there to make sure our concerns are known, as we all work with our counterparts across the state. Again, was said before, but if you're watching now, you'll probably still hear, you've probably already done it, but go to myboca.us/alertboca to sign up for alerts. Stay involved, stay informed. We continue to make preparations, staff does all year long, to maintain our infrastructure to prepare for storms. We will continue to do so, and hopefully, this one passes us. And I really, you know, do hope and pray that it totally dissipates, but until then, we'll do our best and pray for the safety of others who may be in the path of the storm. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting at 3:48 today, and we'll come back tomorrow night at 6:00 PM for our regular council meeting. Thank you, and good afternoon.